Well, good morning and welcome to today's Communication and Say Code Engagement Committee Meeting on this day, Monday, September 16, 2024. Time is going by fast. I am Shebra Evans. I chair the committee and it's so great to see you all. I'm gonna at this time, before turning to my colleague to let her introduce herself, just let everyone know that Grace Rivera Oven is ill today, but we will keep her abreast of our committee meeting. Ms. Yang?
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Julie Yang, District 3. Very glad to see all of you this morning.
And I'm gonna turn to our board staff to have them introduce themselves before going to the table so the audience can know who's presenting today. Thank you.
Good morning. Kristy Scott, Communications Coordinator for the Board of Education.
Good morning, everyone. James Lipinski, Communication Support Specialist.
Good morning. Peggy Pugh, Chief Academic Officer.
Good morning. Jeanne Franklin, Director of Division of Consortium Choice and Application Program Services.
Good morning. Irina LaGrange, Director of College and Career Readiness and District Wide Programs.
Very good. Thank you so much. So before we go on to our topic, are there any corrections or changes to the informational summary?
No.
Okay, so we do have a revised agenda. I'm really excited about the committee's work plan for this year. Today, we want to start off with the topic of academic progress and courses, and really just want to ensure that our families are very much aware of what's happening at their local schools, as well as any application programs that are happening throughout the district. And so it's not, it's not about competition, but it's really about the opportunities that we're affording for our students to take advantage at the local level. And we want our parents to know and understand. And at the same time, we do recognize and understand for some parents, not all, that it's a bit challenging to navigate what's offered at their school, what's available to their student, as well as what they can apply to in regards to our special programming. That's why we wanted to have you here today, just to kind of give us a walkthrough, a brief synopsis of, you know, all that we are trying to do to value the individual students that we have here in our school system, and let our parents know that there's something for everyone, and we want them to, to know and understand MCPS in a better way. So I will, at this time, turn it over to you all to just kind of dive into the discussion.
Perfect. Thank you. Good morning, and we appreciate the opportunity to come before you to share what we have and what we've been growing over the years. And while we've come a long way from sending information in a backpack home with children and hoping that that gets to the families, we're also interested in the opportunity to hear feedback from our community about what's working, what's not, how we can ensure they have the information that they need to know confidently what they might do to help their children plan. So we're also appreciative of our guests who will join us later to share their perspective and story and dig into some of their challenges and how they've overcome them. We're happy to have Erin Shin, Principal of Parkland Magnet Middle School of Aerospace Technology; Jennifer Trincheri, Career Advising Coach Trainer with Workforce Montgomery; Amber Zhengha, Parent at James H. Blake High School; and our very own Student Member of the Board, Purnil Savarna for Clarkspur High School. Next slide or slide, please.
I'll just jump in there and say, we actually did want to have it to be a real round of discussion, where it wasn't just the system speaking to us, but we had family members and students as well. So we appreciate our very own SMOB coming to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So today's focus is really around navigating access and overcoming any obstacles. It is strongly recommended and connected to our student performance and equity work, as you see along the visual. It's also connected to the Montgomery County Public Schools Strategic Plan, Pillar One, Academic Excellence. This is an area of great importance to us, and it drives much of our work as we develop programs to serve and engage our students at the highest levels, based upon their interests and the industry needs in our community. Our collective work is preparing all students for success in college, career, and community, and it does require robust, engaging, and relevant academic programs, both available locally at the homeschool and regionally, where we need to build a program that's stronger and may have unique equipment in a, in a single location rather than through all of the schools. Of course, as you know, this is an all-hands-on-deck effort. Our academic programs is one key dimension in the collective work to support the futures of our students. You'll see the visual demonstrates the intersection of all of this work to support our students, beginning with Maryland's Blueprint for the Future, and then the Strategic Plan with the Academic Excellence, our Montgomery County Public Schools Pathway to College, Career, and Community Readiness, which gives us the measures of how our students are progressing along those pathways, and all undergirded and informed by our Anti-Racist System Action Plan. These bodies of work continue to impact both our local and regional county-wide programs as well. I'll now pass it on to Ms. Jeanne Franklin, Director of Division Consortium Choice and Application Program Services.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. So this graphic here is so simple, but what I wanted to point out is this is something that we use with our families. We want to let them know that MCPS has a number of robust and rigorous programs at their local, local school, elementary and middle or in high. And what's important about that is that it's the bigger circle. It's the orange circle, and the idea is that there's so much happening there. Extracurriculars, signature academy pathways, immersion programs, if you're a two-way immersion school, enriched courses, there's so much. And the schools are personalized for their community. The blue for the regional county-wide programs is designed to show the supplemental programs that students might not have at their local school, and so they might want to explore something else. So these are, this is an opportunity for them to see something else that's available. And so the regional county-wide programs do have limited seats, and we want our students to be aware of the relationship. We want our families to be aware of the relationship. Our local programs are robust. This is where we serve the most students. This is where we serve our families. This is where our families are personally known by the community. And then our regional county-wide programs, this is a family decision, because most of these programs are outside of the homeschool. So we have some clear messages that we'd love for the board to help support us on, that we have strong local academic programs that serve the greatest number of students in our local schools. Our regional county-wide programs supplement the local academic programs. We have robust and rigorous programming in both, both. And our regional county-wide programs, this is really important, they are not superior to our local programs. That's really important, and we have been spending the past few years really communicating that to families, and we'll talk a little bit about that in our next slide. So I wanted to take this slide over, and I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. LaGrange.
Thank you so much, Jeanne. Good morning. MC, next slide, please. There we go. Thank you. MCPS offers a cutting-edge curriculum in our local school that includes the following. Over 40 middle schools offer enriched middle and high school credit courses. Our students are taking advantage of their local schools' academic or signature programs at the majority of our high schools. These are themed course pathways that lead students into further exploration and depth of a high-interest topic. Examples include Advanced Studies in Arts and Humanities at Quince Orchard High School, or the APEX program at Walter Johnson High School, and Advanced Placement Signature Program. Six elementary schools are offering two-way Spanish immersion, and college credit through dual enrollment, advanced placement, or international baccalaureate courses are available at no cost to families. Students are also earning industry-recognized credentials through our access to career and technical education programs, and are also have access to apprenticeships and other work-based learning opportunities that allow them to apply their classroom learning to career interests. As part of our blueprint initiatives and in close collaboration with WorkSource Montgomery, secondary students are also receiving career advising, and today you will hear from one of our coaches. It's important to note that this year, MCPS was recognized for having the highest number of students in Maryland who received their associate's degree prior to earning their high school degree. Dual enrollment has been yet another opportunity for students to expand their learning through rigorous college courses while staying engaged and connected to their high school communities. Our local schools offer so much more. Next slide, please.
Can I just say that I have just really been championing and talking about the dual enrollment program and how great it is for a lot of our students. It gives them just, some of them, it gives them hope to be able to go on to get their, their college degree because they've finished two years here at MCPS. So thank you. I'll see Dr. Floyd.
Yes, Dr. Floyd is here with us in the audience. Later during the discussion, she will be more than welcome to join us. Absolutely, and we commend her for that work.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
So before we get started, it is important to remember that our students have multiple academic interests. Both local and regional county-wide programs can be unmatched. Although some students may have high-degree interest in an area of study, it is very likely that they have multiple academic interests. For example, a student who may thrive in sciences can also be a strong creative writer, and a student who is interested in technology may also be a talented artist or performer. These multiple interests can be matched in a number of different ways academically, at the local school, or in one of our regional county-wide programs. Next slide, please. It is important to recognize that our, that with our programs, they may be barriers to access. Some examples include limited seats or limited course offerings, students and their families being unaware of the program or the admissions process, and concern about student isolation in a program. As a system, we are committed to mitigating these barriers, and we'll discuss this further later in our presentation. Next slide, please. For example, in order to support middle school students in both exploring their academic interests and preparing them for vertical articulation, we want to make sure that they're well-versed in the various programs available at their local schools or in the consortia so that they can make an informed decision. We realize that we can't wait until the fall application of eighth grade. As a result, we have introduced district-wide asynchronous lessons for all seventh-grade students across the county, and these lessons are to be used as a resource. The lessons include videos, links to programs, and other information that highlights all of their choices. This last year, 4,145 seventh-grade students took advantage of these asynchronous lessons.
Dr. LaGrange, I'll stop you just for a second. Can you just say out loud for parents to know and understand, at what point during the seventh-grade year does this happen? In that way, they can say, you know what, you're gonna get these videos, pay close attention. That way, you can figure out what you want to do prior to eighth grade. Do you have a time of the year?
They happen in June. Every year, they happen in June. And what's really important to remember is that we intentionally created them as a Canvas course, which means that students have access to all the videos, all the resources, all the links, all summer, and on into eighth grade. So we were very intentional that when students came home, they wanted to talk to their parents, they wanted to discuss the survey. This was all done in a way that this continues to be a resource for families, and they can refer back to them. When students meet individually with their career advisors or counselors, they can pull that information up and speak to it with specificity. We also created a survey for students, so the students shared with us what programs they're interested in, and that allows our supervisors, who run those programs, to reach out to parents and students via email and share additional information during the summer.
Okay, I was just gonna ask that other question. Okay, but you just covered that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. During middle school years, both the counselors and the career advisors worked closely with students and their parents to help them make the right match. We are proud of the multitude of programs available to students, so we have continued to focus on supporting school counselors and career advisors around our programs. All students deserve to be informed about their academic choices, advanced placement, international baccalaureate, or dual enrollment courses, we, as well as work-based learning opportunities that will prepare them for college and career readiness. Also, in additions to dozens of open houses, webinars, and community meetings, we have been exploring social media and student-driven marketing strategies to promote the wealth of information and programs available to our students. I will now pass it back to Ms. Jeanne Franklin.
Thank you, Dr. LaGrange. So, next slide, please. So 9,275 seats are available annually in all of our programs that we have, that we run a central admission for. And we have over 100 K-12 full and part-time programs, and this is where we address them through a central admission. So if you have a central admission, you also have central communication, you also have central results, and we also support the schools and we partner with the schools. And so our program started about five decades ago, five decades, five decades ago, in the 1970s. And so during the 1970s, we had our first program installed, which was a visual arts center at Einstein. And then soon after, we had some other programs follow along. And all of this information, if you're interested in the historical information about these programs, is in the Metis Report that was printed in 2016. It was a study done on the equity of our programs, and that was released in 2016, and we have been responding to a number of the recommendations in that study. But just a summary of why some of our programs even exist, some of that was because of fostering integration, racial integration. We also had schools where we had lower enrollment, so we wanted to place a program to address enrollment. We also have programs that were popular, but we needed to expand them because students couldn't always get to the one program in the county. So if you expand them, then you have students who could say yes to the program because they were closer. It was also an ease on some of the limited central stop transportation that we offer. Another goal, up in particular for the Middle School Magnet Consortium, that includes Argyle, Parkland, and Loiderman, when we opened that consortium in 2002, I believe it was, maybe, one of the big, big challenges there, we wanted to broaden socioeconomics at those schools. So then we opened it up to out-of-consortium families to come. And so through the Metis Report in 2016, you will find that the Middle School Magnet Consortium was considered one of the darlings of the study because it addressed one school community, it addressed equity. Families, when they were interviewed, didn't recognize, what do you mean, I'm in consortium or out-of-consortium? So the idea is that those principals worked very hard to build one school community. And then the other reason why we have regional county-wide programs is it's cost prohibitive to try to replicate all of these programs in all the different schools, and also it's difficult to sometimes get a critical mass, because as we said, we have lots of students with lots of different interests. And so we want to make sure that, once we install a program, we have a critical mass of students that come together and they can study together. Next slide, please. So just a real quick overview, very high level. Most of our regional county-wide programs are career readiness, language immersion, and magnet with a theme such as humanities and communication, or math, science, and computer science. There are three different ways that the process works for students to be admitted. We have a central review, which is no application, which is one of our strategies that we did install for our families who are very concerned about, there's so much to know. I don't know when to apply, I don't know what to do. So for our enrichment programs for middle school and for elementary school, we eliminated the application process, and we do a central review. It's a research-based process. And all the students in grade three, all the students in grade five get reviewed, and then they are identified whether they need enrichment for the following year. That process has alleviated the angst. It's a very parent-friendly process. Information is shared in multiple languages with families, and we also work very closely with the schools so that they know this information. The other way that families can enter a process is through an application and a lottery. So an application process would be the elementary language immersion. You apply on a Google form, and then you, we run a lottery. And then we also have the Middle School Magnet Consortium, where you apply, and then we run a lottery. Then we have an application and a review committee. And some of our programs in elementary and middle used to have a review committee, but then they evolved to a central review. Now we have our high school criteria-based programs that you might be familiar with, such as Global Ecology at Poolsville, the Regional IB Program, International Baccalaureate Program at Springbrook, the Leadership Training Institute Program at Kennedy. Those are criteria-based, and then a review committee comes together. So these are the three ways that teams come, that students get placed in these programs. The interesting part of our programs as well, which is similar to other systems, is that the admission process starts about a year in advance. So our grade eight families, who are just settling in to their last year in school, are now getting information from us about, make sure to come to the open houses, we want you to be aware of your programs, and we start giving them lots of information. We did a soft launch with this information in grade seven in the spring, where we shared information through emails so that they knew about these programs. Just want you to also be aware, and for any of our families watching, that our regional programs, although we have many of them, there are some eligibility requirements that might come with, such a prerequisite, or what current middle school you're at, and your home address. So all of those pieces are put together for you in all of our communication. The little star on the slide, I just want you to be aware that the board should have received last Thursday our annual memorandum that we prepare about all of our programs, and you'll see some of that data on our slides, but it gives you a summary of all of the work that had been done and all of the outcomes thus far. So let me take a pause. I said a lot in those two slides, and are there any questions that you have for us?
Ms. Yang?
Yes, yes. Good morning. Thank you. I don't know what's coming up in your slides, so.
Sure.
It might be covered later on. So first of all, there is some news or announcement. Isn't it today or, or this week, you will be putting on the high school criteria program information on the MCPS website?
That sounds correct.
That's correct, right? So I just want the audience outside there, you know, out there to know information you will on the website. Now, today, I just want to have some understanding. So I'm gonna wear two hats, right? A hat as a board member, and a hat as a MCPS parent or community member. So as a board member, I think we offer, you mentioned, 100 programs, which is amazing, really a lot. We are really one of the premier school districts that offer this many options for students. However, as a board member, I'm really interested in our whole, it might be beyond this committee, but the strategic, the strategy we're using, what the long-term vision we have for why we offer a program, what we are offering, where we are offering, to who we are targeting, what's the rationale behind it, what's the impact on our finance, school district budget, what's the impact on our transportation, right? What's the return of our investment? Do we ever follow these students and see their outcome and evaluate these programs, right? So as a board member, that is what I like to know. But for today's community engagement, if I'm coming in as a, as a parent, I'm new to the county, or I'm new to the school system, what the first thing I would say, oh, what are the academic programs? Who should I ask? Where do I get information, right? So can you give me an idea where and who do parents talk to? And, you know, and, and how this is carried out in our community?
Yes, I think that's a really great question. And in our elementary, middle, and high schools, our teams work very closely with all of the different groups in the schools. So an example is we brief the principals. So principals have information, they have a memorandum that they share with their staff. In the elementary schools, we have GT liaisons and counselors who get briefed on the variety of opportunities that are available. They're invited to meetings, they're invited to open houses. We also have meetings during the day so that they can get an experience for themselves about the different schools, so they can bring back their own experience to the schools. We also provide the schools' data so that they can see, we have a number of our students that have participated in the Centers for Enriched Studies, or that have remained in our school, or that they attend the Middle School Magnet Consortium. So in elementary school, GT liaisons, sometimes our PTSA, we work with them to have them because they are trusted folks for some of our families. We work with the principals, we work with the counselors. And then in the middle schools, we have the counselors. We also have the accelerated and enriched instruction support teacher, who works closely with a, with the parents and with the students themselves and with the staff, simply because we want to make sure all these folks have this information. Then we also work with the NAACP chapter reps at different schools who who seek out information, and the identity members who would like to help share information. And then in the high schools, we have a number of different folks. We have, again, the counselors, the principals. We work with some of the academy coordinators who reach out to the middle schools. They go to lunch to see the students. They also work very closely with the PTSA as well. So we do have a three-prong approach. Everything is multi-pronged. So that's a slide, so we don't even have to cover that later. But it is a multi-pronged approach. We're working with our external partners, we're working with the school staff, and then we're also working with our central office staff. So we're a small team in OSIP, but yet we want to make sure that we corral all of this information so families know the information. But most important, Ms. Yang, I do want to say this. I am a big champion for our local schools. So being in this work has really made me look at, we have great regional county-wide programs, but it's a trade-off to do those programs for a local school. So we talk real carefully with our families about the different opportunities that they have. Some students are really not ready to leave their homeschool. Some students are really not ready for a possible one-hour bus ride. Some students really are not ready, are interested in committing hours, potentially on interdisciplinary work from a regional county program. So what we do is we work with families and our counselors and our coordinators so that they can help the families think about all their different options. It might look like a beautiful shiny object on the shelf that your family wants to have. But this is our child's experience. We want them to be very engaged with their experience. We want them to be well. We want them to have, I love this new word, this new term. We want them to have productive struggle in their experience so that they know that they're growing. So we have a whole team of information. Indirectly, we have an options booklet that lists all of the different programs online. We're sending that to, we're sending the link to families this week. And then, or maybe in the next two weeks. And then we also have our website. So we have a number of different indirect and direct ways that families can get information. We have letters that come. And, just wanted to say this. For some of our families who may be more disenfranchised or marginalized, we work very closely with our parent community coordinators and ask them to do targeted outreach to ensure that families are aware and feel comfortable about their options. We are not championing that people have to apply or consider the regional county-wide programs. What we are championing for is being informed of your options.
So, follow up on, thank you for that very comprehensive answer. Follow up, GT liaison. Is there a school system position, a parent volunteer position? Is it in every school?
It's in all of the elementary schools and it's a staffed position.
So in all elementary schools, they should have a GT liaison?
GT liaison position.
Nothing equivalent in the middle, secondary level?
Those are the AEISTs, the Accelerated and Enriched Instruction Support Teachers.
And that's a paid position?
It's a paid position.
A stipend?
It's a paid position. It's a released position.
Oh, so every school should have a person? Okay, I have gone through with MCPS with two students. I don't even realize that. And so, every elementary school also have a GT liaison that's a fully released position?
Not fully released. I don't believe it's fully released.
Okay, that's a stipend or part-time position in every school? Okay.
We can get that info.
And I wonder whether our principals can highlight these positions. I understand we want to focus on our local schools. But, okay, counselors, you say counselors. But as I understand, most of our elementary schools have one counselor. You know, so I know there's a tremendous need there as a system. I'm also wondering, when you say there are bootlegs and pamphlets, are those automatically given to parents or the parents have to request them?
Most of our information is available in, on online link. And what families get from their school, if they're new, or they'll get it from us centrally if they're with us now. But if they're new students, they will get a letter from their school about the opportunities should they have missed the information.
For every grade level or is just the transitional grade?
During the transitional grade. So for example, our information is going out now. And there is a certain date. So let's just say it's October 1st, we have any new students and beyond. So then the middle schools and the elementary schools will give out information to rising middle school students and rising high school students to make sure they have information.
So I, here is what I have experienced, right? Actually, a lot of parents call me to say, what are some programs available? I think the first line of communication for our family is their teachers. So they approach their teachers. So if their teachers understand the offerings the teachers will share, sometimes the teacher will remember to say, check with the counselor or principal. But sometimes they might not be aware that is the channel for the families to seek information. And also, people will say, check the website. But I'm not sure whether our teachers know what will be the most effective search word on MCPS main website. You know, do they put in academic programs? Or do they put in specialty programs? Or do they put in enrichment, you know?
Yes.
So some of the education, I think, because teachers are the first-line communicators with our families and might need to be more visible to our, to the whole staff, not just one or two people in the building. I didn't know I have those people in my student's building before. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Yang, I want to go back to your first question about what's our strategy? What's our long-term vision? And how do we know we're having a return on investment? So there are a couple of things to consider, but I think what you're hearing the team say is, we want families to have strong local programs. We want every school to be able to meet the needs of the students who reside near that school. And so, there's two areas that we're talking about today. One is the gifted and talented programs, which, if you think about it, a student is identified as needing enrichment or acceleration. And then those programs are offered and designed differently in different areas of the county. But every student can have those needs met right at their homeschool. The other piece, when we're talking about career and technical education programs, is those are monitored on an annual basis. We submit data to the state. We look at our completion rate. We look at the number of certificates earned. We look at the cost that it is to expand a program or to maintain a program. And as hard as it is, sometimes we have to look at programs and say, we need to phase this out. Because students are no longer interested, or we don't have the teacher training available anymore, or the program itself has changed. Sometimes that happens through the state. So for an example, the childhood education program, if you wanted to go in and be a teacher, we used to have students come out with being able to be a paraprofessional right away. The state changed that to the Child Development Associates. And the colleges had to shift to create a new outcome. So my point is, the data for students who are selecting programs for career and technical education is something we routinely look at. And it is something where we have to make very challenging decisions, right? Because if a program has existed, that is a very hard process. And it usually takes a year to do so. And it's not something an individual school should do on their own. Because again, we have to plan for students who may have started that program.
Let me ask this question. So how do we sometimes maybe not use the data to inform our decisions? Because sometimes there's, you know, there's stories there, right? So whereas a program might not have as many students as we like, the program could have a significant amount of value for the students that it serves. So how do we make sure that we're not taking away a program that actually is helping a student to be engaged in their education? Because sometimes stories, you know, when you hear and you see, right? As a board member, excuse me. We hear about the data, right? But sometimes when we see for ourselves, there's something that comes through that you don't see in the data. So how do we make certain and be careful that we're not eliminating programs that actually add value to the lives of our students?
Absolutely, 100%. The data is only one piece of the story. And when you look at the students who are interested in a program, we want to be able to provide access to that. However, we might be able to do it in one school versus another school, having it in a central location if it's a very expensive program to maintain and run because of the equipment needs and things like that. But the other piece that you say about it might be a small program, but it's still providing value for the students, that's how many of the programs were developed, right?
Sure.
An interest of the students, an interest of the school, a passion. And then it goes through changes throughout the years based upon, you know, the student experience. So sometimes enrollment tells us a story that students are or are not interested. But we want to be respectful of the students who are interested and how we might best provide their resources.
Because that was gonna, and I know Ms. Hazel was there to say something. That was my other question. I was waiting for Ms. Yang to complete her questions, which were actually really great, is how are we measuring or determining students that aren't accessing programs at their local schools to be able to encourage more students to participate? Because it could just be a matter of, I just wasn't aware. Or I didn't know this program offered this, these many advantages for me. It could be a program where, when you don't, when you read the title on the, you don't instantly see that it could provide you leadership skills and a variety of other things. I just wanted to ensure that, because we offer so many programs, that in the event that our students, our students aren't accessing them in the way that we thought they would, like what is our approach? And how do we go about increasing?
If I could start for a second? Because we have an opportunity. This is going to change a bit of how we have been functioning in that the blueprint states that every student who is college and career-ready by the end of 10th grade has to go into one of four pathways, right? And so, it is the APIB, sort of that advanced pathway, Career Technical Education, leading to an industry credential, dual enrollment, leading to, as you spoke of, multiple credits at a great savings for families, and then a support pathway for students who are not college and career-ready yet. And so, we have an opportunity to sort of align our programs and every student will be in one of those programs. If you're in a support pathway, you still have choice and opportunity to take courses in the other pathway. It just means we need to do some work to make sure that you do hit those math and English and GPA markers so that you do have opportunity post-college, career, and readiness.
Okay. I just want to make sure we explain that. Because I don't know that Dr. Taylor has talked about, we need to be the best at getting better. And I don't know that everybody actually believes that, that we're working as hard as we say we are. And so, the more we can share and explain and be as detailed, but as simple as possible, right? Will be helpful. And then I just wanted to go back to, I think, one of the comments that my colleague made about all the different people that our students, that our parents can or should be going to, to get that additional information. I will say this, you know, our counselors are very important in our school buildings. They have served our two daughters very well, as well as I've heard that they serve other students and families well. But as Ms. Yang said, they're just one person. And so oftentimes, what happens is, when families don't get the information that they think that they should be getting or receiving, they want to put the blame all on the counselors. So how do we take some of that off of the counselors? I know you mentioned at the elementary school level, it's the GT liaisons. And you said acronym AEIC. I can't remember the exact acronym.
AEISTs in middle school.
AEISTs. I'm writing it down.
Acceleration, enrichment, instruction. What does ST means? Let's do less acronym.
Yes, they accelerated and enriched instruction support teacher.
Support teacher.
Support teacher, yeah. So we can get that. But I just wanted to, I wanted to say that, you know, every operating budget season, we are always trying to champion getting more counselors. We don't have as many as we would like, right? How do we, how do we take some of that burden away from them, right? Because it's a lot of information. I mean, you said at the very beginning, there are 9,279 programs that we offer. And we're relying on a small set of individuals to get that information out. And I'm looking at Ms. Franklin, and I'm not expecting for you to answer. I'm just, your smile, like I'm just looking at you. But, so how do we, and I know we keep saying that we, how do we continue to remind people how they can access this information? But at the same time, not make our parents feel like it's all on them to be able to find it? Like, so it's a hard, it's a hard balance. So help me, help them.
It's a great question. I think it's important to keep in mind that in addition to our counselors, we now have the career advising coaches through the Blueprint Initiative. And also, again, our focus in using our apprentices to do that marketing through, to connect with other students. We believe that that's one of our strengths too, to use our students to communicate with their peers, to share about our programs. And I also think it's important to keep in mind that unfortunately, it's never one and done, right? So no matter how great the presentation is, or how informative the resources are, we have to do it continuously, multiple times. And we have to, as a village, empower both students, parents, as you've mentioned, teachers. Mrs. Evans, at one of the community meetings with county council, you had mentioned also the importance of us to explore pamphlets, to explore additional.
Yes, I was gonna say that too.
And so, thinking about that as well. We have an amazing print shop. That is something we're looking into. In terms of our work with our, one of the things with WorkSource Montgomery and our career advising coaches, one thing that the coaches have asked for is how can we support them and build their capacity and understanding what all the programs are? So again, using technology, using QR codes, thinking of ways to embed videos and in different information so that when the coaches meet with individual students, they can pull up the QR code based on whatever high school they're at, based on the interest of the students. So having that multiple onboarding pathways. So it's, what does your local school offer? Where are these programs? Can you stay at your local school and access a part-time program? So there are just so many different ways for onramping. And I think one thing that we are honest about is the importance of increasing access and information and finding new ways to do that. And that's something that we're working on. And we're not there yet, and I don't think we'll ever be there yet. But just being honest with ourselves to know that it's not about the parents. And you're correct, it's, parents should not have to be the sole provider of that information. But I think the best part is that we, as a team, we enjoy communicating with families and parents. And we are, we're having fun thinking of additional ways to engage folks. And so that's something that's part of our work and it's something that's ongoing.
And I just wanted to add for the record.
Yes.
Going back to Ms. Yang's question about the GT liaison. It is not a paid position in our school system. It is an assigned position, usually to either classroom teacher or staff development teacher reading specialist in the building.
So it's like additional duty?
Correct.
For those positions? Got you.
Yes.
I have, I see Dr. Karen Cruz in the audience, right? And I, work-based learning is one of my interest area. And also, eighth grade is a huge transition year because of all the different offerings and four-year high school academic planning. So I want to get a little bit of in-depth understanding about during that transition years, what do we do as a system to help students plan for their high school academic path?
In terms of specifically with work-based learning?
Everything, I think.
Okay, there's Dr. Cruz is joining us.
Because you, we have four different pathways for the students, right? And our academic programs also are in these, all, cover all of these four pathways, yes.
Yes, hi, hello. I'm Karen Cruz, Director of School Counseling. And I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you for bringing that up because that is something that we have worked on for several years, just ensuring that students have an actual plan for their post-secondary pursuits. And so, one thing that we've done in the past, everyone knows, we had Naviance and we worked very hard to have our course planner. And the course planner basically allows students, starting in eighth grade, to determine what courses they wanted to take. And those courses should have been aligned with whatever career exploration that they chose and looked at in Naviance. Well, moving forward, we have, you know, cut some of what we're doing in Naviance. And the course planner is one of those things that has gone by the wayside. However, we are looking to... However, we are looking to revise and revive one of our older processes that we had, which was using a course planner that, right now, is pen and paper. But we are looking to try to digitize it so that students can still kind of look at even their RIASEC scores, looking at the career readiness work that we're doing, and revising that form so that it fits more of the work that we're doing now with the career readiness and the collaboration with WorkSource Montgomery. And so we're exploring that option now, and hopefully we'll be able to have that ready for spring or at least by the 2025, 26 school year so that students will be able to identify, one, where their career interests, what's their RIASEC score, or their RIASEC, so that they can identify what actually are things that they enjoy doing, the things, who they are, and connect that to what they want to do post-secondary, and then plan out their courses based on that. So we, and all of that involves looking at the regional programs. Are there specific programs that a student should look at based on what their interests are? And having those counseling conversations with the students. And so we're in the process of developing that now that we don't have Naviance, but we hope to have that ready soon.
Okay. A follow-up question to that is, I have seen those yellow sheet, you know, before, and, and it lays out very nicely within your high school some pathway, maybe academy of finance, or maybe media focus, okay. However, right now, that sheet doesn't include county-wide program, does it?
No, it does not. It actually just includes the career strands that a student may be interested in. And so that begins the conversation about the programs. But we're, we're looking to completely revise that program, that, that form.
So who does this? Once you have a program, you have a new sheet, who will do this with the student and how? Is it one-on-one? Is it a whole grade meeting? Is it a whole class meeting? How is this done?
So at each school, it's done a little bit differently. It usually happens at around December, January. Some schools, the counselors will do it individually. At some schools, they do a classroom activity, and they walk the, the students through how to look at various programs. And they have a PowerPoint, and they, they walk students through how to complete their course planner. At some schools, a small group. So it just depends on the school, but it's generally the school counselor that will do that work with the student.
How does parents or guardians come into play in this process?
It's a great question. Each year, the counselors and the principals have an actual parent meeting to walk the students and the parents through what they will learn for the year. So they tell them, you know, here are all of the course offerings. This is what is going to happen around determining what courses the students should take. And they, they go through the process during those parent meetings.
So perfect timing. Can we have, we have Mr. Aaron Shen joining us today.
From a school, because I, 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 I think my children bring home the yellow sheet, but I don't think I ever participated in a school-wide meeting. So I would like to hear what happens in our buildings.
Wonderful. So we'd like to welcome Mr. Shen, who's gonna speak to us through the principal lens about the process and how he's making sure that students know what's available to them and building that partnership with his community. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, Mr. Shen, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good to see you, Ms. Evans. I prepared something first. Would it be best if I just share, and then I could answer any questions?
Sure.
All right. So good morning. My name is Aaron Shen. I am the principal of Parkland Middle School. I'd like to first take a moment to thank the M C P S Board of Education Committee members, Ms. Evans, Ms. Yang, this morning. And I'm happy to share my experience at Parkland Magnet Middle School for Aerospace Technology and how we serve our local in-consortium students and families, as well as our county-wide out-of-consortium students and families. In an effort to introduce all M C P S students and families to our aerospace magnet program, we host a yearly open house in October for all of our fifth-grade families. During this time, we share about the various STEM elective courses that we offer, such as Introduction to Engineering Design, Applied Robotics and Programming, 3D Printing, Principles of Flight, and many others. We also communicate to our prospective students and families that all of our eighth-grade students can leave Parkland with a physical science high school credit, which is unique to Parkland. But students can also earn high school credit through math courses like Algebra I and Geometry, and oral language courses like they can at their local middle schools. As students and families join our school community as sixth graders, we, as a school staff, spend the next three years doing everything we can to serve our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Ultimately, our goal is to prepare our students for high school. And we know an integral part of accomplishing this goal is to build trust and form positive relationships with our families. Several ways we attempt to build positive relationships is through school events, community partnerships, and individualized support. So one example of a school event is our Principal's Coffee. I host a Principal's Coffee every marking period to provide updates and share school-wide announcements. This Principal's Coffee is a hybrid model, meaning students can join us in person or via Zoom. This decision was made as a result of a parent and family feedback survey that was given through, given to our community where they wanted the option of joining us virtually to accommodate their work schedule. We also host a Principal's Coffee on two different dates, where one is presented in English and the other is presented in Spanish. We also build trust and create positive relationships with our families through community partnerships. One example of our community partnership is our collaboration with the P T S A. Our P T S A has helped organize a Spanish-speaking WhatsApp chat group with our families to share important school information. We also collaborate by coordinating our efforts to align, align our events. For example, our October P T S A meeting will focus on the high school choice process. We not only invite our eighth grade, current eighth-grade families, but we encourage our sixth and seventh-grade families to join us so they can get a jumpstart on what to expect. We also have parents who have already gone through the high school choice process to come out and share their insight and learning, and provide some support and mentoring. We also utilize our partnerships with Linkages of Learning as they also meet with our students and families to provide a broad range of supports, which include helping our students and families navigate middle school in preparation for high school. And one last example, we've heard this many times already, of our community partnership is through M C P S's collaboration with WorkSource Montgomery and the Montgomery County Career Advising Program. Last year, all of our sixth-grade students received lessons on effective college and career readiness characteristics known as RIASEC, which stands for Realistic, Investigative, Artistic, Social, Enterprising, and Conventional. Our career coach also met one-on-one with students and in small groups to talk about their interests and how various academic programs can align with their goals. The career coach is also coordinated with the Down County Consortium to share about the various academies at our D C C high schools with our seventh graders. Lastly, we also work diligently to provide individualized supports. Our team of teachers, counselors, team leaders, and administrators meet with families one-on-one and provide guidance related to the high school choice process. We have met with many eighth-grade families, students and families that had the exciting opportunity to consider a large number of high schools. We talk through all of the unique contextual circumstances, and we help provide insight on what each school has to offer. We also meet with our families while they are in sixth and seventh grade. For example, I met a sixth grader, a sixth-grade family during a Wheaton High School cluster meet and greet. Even as a sixth-grader, the student and family had questions about high school. So we offered to meet with the family after the student had an opportunity to become acclimated to middle school. The same parent joined us for our Principal's Coffee a couple of weeks ago, and we're able to reconnect, and we have scheduled a time to meet and review the high school choice process. I'd like to close by mentioning that we, along with A Mario Lordham in Middle School and Argyle Middle School, are in our 20th year of the M S M C, the Middle School Magnet Consortium. As Ms. Franklin already mentioned, in 2016, 2016, the Minister Report, which examined programs for equity, found out that the Middle School Magnet Consortium was a solid instructional model because it was found to strongly support one school community with opportunities of rigor and support all students. This is a source of pride for us, and we continue to draw interest within and outside of the school community. I am very grateful and honored to be the principal of Parkland. Our motto is "Every Student, Whatever It Takes", and I believe our entire staff embraces this motto as we serve our students and families inside and outside the classroom. And we do everything we can to prepare our students for high school and beyond. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share my experiences with you today.
Thank you, Mr. Shen. So I'm just gonna tell a quick story. Sydney is a senior in college.
Wow.
And she attended Parkland Magnet Middle School. And Mr. Shen, you were the magnet coordinator?
I was teacher, and I think was the acting magnet coordinator at the time. Acting, emphasis on acting.
Absolutely. So you are definitely a valued fixture at Parkland. And I remember you, and you were always very helpful. So I appreciated that. And you know what? Thank you, Dr. Cruz, for coming up here. Not a part of the, the, the panel, but definitely slid right in there. And Ms. Hazel, appreciate you, too. But I forgot all about the career advising. I'm, I'm so happy about our partnership with WorkSource Montgomery. So we'll hear from you very soon. And Dr. Cruz mentioned Naviance. That's what got our kids through, and it was very helpful. And that yellow sheet did come home to us. We had to sign it, if I'm not mistaken. So the, the students could not just go ahead and make a decision to go ahead and enter these courses without getting a parent's signature. And Sierra went to Argyle. So I remember specifically, because that was more recent, with Principal Allridge, about how they just made sure that parents were aware of the decisions and the choices that were discussed between the student and the counselor. So I just wanted to state that. And I'm pretty certain Mr. Allridge is still at Argyle, and things are still happening the same way. But I appreciated what you had to say, Mr. Shen, about how you really do the work at Parkland to make certain that our students are prepared and at least aware of what their choices and options are and all that you do to make certain that the parents are kept abreast and up to speed. So do we go back and, I don't want to say check up on our principals, because I know you all are capable of doing the work, but how do we ensure that there's consistency across the district to ensure that everyone is sharing the information with their parents? Not in the same way as Mr. Shen. Because Mr. Shen is doing what's great for, you know, what's best for his community. You know your school community. So how are we checking in to ensure those touch points are happening throughout the district? Because what happens is, we hear like what's happening at Parkland. I know what's happening at Argyle. But then somebody else will come along and say, well, that didn't quite happen that way at our school. And guess what? Every administrator is making the assumption that how they're doing it is, is meeting the needs of their community. But for some of our families, it's not. So how do, like, what touch points are we making to ensure that what's happening, and what's supposed to happen, is actually happening?
So that's a really good question, Ms. Evans. I just wanted to go back and just say out loud that we have 9,275 seats available.
Seats, that's right. I said programs.
Seats available, yes.
That's right.
And I thought, oh, wow, that might be a little overwhelming to parents. Now they're gonna be like, that's why we can't learn about all of these programs.
Right, 100.
But over 100. We do have over 100. And, but we also have over 155,000 students with lots of different interests. So this really is proportional in some of our eyes, right? In some of our eyes. But I think that's a really good question. So how we start off in getting our schools ready at the different levels is we first have a standard memorandum that talks about what we learned about the former year, and then what we want to do going forward. We also key up for the principals to share this with key people. On your staff, your front office staff, your counselors, some of the other members that we have. We also bring that same information to parent, parent community coordinators. We bring it to the psychologists. We bring it to the registrars. We bring it to lots of different central office groups so that we have a version of information that's being shared, and it's all hands on deck. Dr. Pu said, it's all hands on deck. But that's what we want to do. So we make sure that way. What's interesting when we do this is that, just as we are using some of our personal experiences, some of the folks that we work with, the staff, will say, well, in my experience with my child, this did not happen. Or I don't, didn't realize we have these programs. So what's really good about that is that it becomes an emotional experience as well. They find that this is something they want for their own children, and so they want this for the students at their school. Again, it is truly a partnership. It's a lot of information. But I do want to also stress, we really encourage parents to, and we champion the idea, please learn about your local school. Please learn about the fabulous programs you have simultaneously as you're learning about the regional county-wide programs. Because we want to make sure we're not setting it up that these are the programs that you have to have. And when you don't get them, you're disappointed. We say, look at the local programs that you have. Engage in those, examine those, talk to trusted adults in the building that you know. Get your original information versus reading the lister, versus reading a variety of different serves. So that you have your own information about your own experience for your own child. So that's something. And I, I think you're right. What we're learning, Ms. Yang, is that as a small office, we do critical mass communication. We really rely on our schools and our small group partners to share information with, with others. And so we just need that to become much more robust. So we will develop that.
Right, so I, I appreciate that. Because there is, what we are talking about is not what is better, but what is a better fit for your student. That's what we are talking about. And also, we all are aware the variances that, of practices in our schools. So how do we first have the comprehensive information, but also have shorter versions, clear information that's easy to digest and understand? And thirdly, that all our staff, not just one or two, have some of the information, at least know where to direct people, and encourage our schools to really look at they, are they meeting the, the needs, right? Or the, of their school community. I hate to say, this should be just the role of one or two person. We know that cannot happen with over 100 programs with the amount of students in the building. So I appreciate Principal Shen sharing the multiple ways. He's participating, his staff's participating. It's offered in English, it's offered in Spanish, it's a whole group. It's individualized. So multiple ways to meet the needs of the community. And, and, and as much I say, we should have a uniform ways to make things easy. I know that won't happen. But how do we, the question is, how do we work with each schools to make this happen at a local level? Thank you.
So we'll let you all proceed. I know, I'm looking at the time, it's 11:01. We still have a couple of different panelists to hear from.
Can we go back to the slide that we were on? And, and while we're transitioning, thinking about the, the multiple ways for people to know the information to help guide and support selections. We do have some people that you can go to in the building. But again, the programs also continue to change and evolve. So I hear the question about how do we make sure that all schools have their plan and that they have access to the most current information? And so we'll take that back, too.
So we have talked about quite a few things going forward. So can we go to the next slide, please? So this is an example that's in our options booklet. And so sometimes, a lot of information is not helpful, can be very overwhelming and paralyzing to families. So that's why we try to share it at different times. We recognize that two years out is sometimes not enough time for families to process. So we're looking at earlier ways. And Mr. Shen just described how he invites the sixth graders to learn about high school options. So that's an example of a model that we can put in our memorandum and talk with principals about as well, so that they can start sharing this information early. But this is an example of maps that are available in our options booklet. Again, it's a very dense set of information that's available for families to look through. But the theme here and the message here is, first, look at your local options. Simply because that's where we serve the largest number of students, and we are working very hard to strengthen those opportunities for our students. Next slide, please. So we already talked about our multi-pronged approach with our key stakeholders. We work directly with families and students. We have information meetings. We invite them to open houses. We record everything that we can record, and then we send that out to families so they can view it on their own. We have a Dropbox where families can communicate with us. We also set up times with our families to talk with us. But we really direct them to their schools because they trust their schools and their staff. So we brief the counselors, all of the staff members schools and their staff. So we brief the counselors, all of the staff members for whom we can get our access to, to share information about this, about the different programs. But it is also in tandem. What are your local options? And here are some regional options. And that they're all, they all have trade-offs. And then we also partner with our community partners for whom get access to other families that we might not be able to get to. We present with them. They send information on our behalf. They direct people to us. So we do have those pieces. We still have a little ways to go, simply because it is a huge effort. We have families who are calling us, asking us where they should move because they're thinking about getting pregnant and having a family. So we know how important this is. And then we also have many families, and mine would be a perfect example, who totally trust the school to make the decision for where I go in the future. So I just think that that's the gamut we run and so we're trying to respond to that. And so I wanted to put on that slide just for you, that we have early and on-time outreach, where we're reaching out early, but we also have it as needed and on time. Next slide, please. So we are right now in our season. Ms. Evans wanted to have this meeting early because we wanted to kind of kick off the season that the secondary regional countywide program opportunities are coming up. And so families are going to be invited. We've asked them to clear out their October so that they can visit us at our high schools and our middle schools. And anything that we, they are unable to see, we have brochures and booklets online for them to look at. And then we also have recorded video presentations that they can see in English and Spanish. And then we also have our staff. We're always happy to share with them. And then we have such competent staff members at our schools who can also help support them. For our elementary, we have the language immersion that starts in February. And then we also do the central review for grade three students for enriched literacy that happens in the winter of 2025. And that date on our slide is incorrect. It'll be February 2025, where local registration at the secondary level will happen. So the beauty of this is this, is that our local programs and our regional countywide programs have all aligned their timelines so that they're also reaching out to their students saying, we have all of these opportunities. Come learn about our opportunities. And if you have a signature or an academy program at a high school, they also have an admission process. And the goal is that in January, all of the families learn about their options at the same time so they can make a decision. And that's the time to say, well, do you want to leave your home high school? Do you want to stay here? What are the opportunities that you'd be trading off? And so I think this is a really good time for our student member, who is here. It was interesting. He also had this of interest to him. And so we had a conversation and it just happened to be that he was available this morning to join us from a student perspective, as a very interesting story that I think can speak to a little bit about what you are talking about in terms of your local school and your regional programs. So thank you, Mr. Savarna, for being here.
All right. Thank you. I'll quickly introduce myself. For those who don't know, my name is Pranil Savarna. I'm a rising senior at Clarksburg High School. So just a little fun fact about me is I actually went to six different MCPS schools over the past, you know, 18 years. So I've had experience with Magnet Elementary School, being at my home middle school, and then also Magnet High School before transferring back to my home high school. So I'll give you a little bit of context. But for, when I was in first grade, there was a new school built, Wilson Wimms. So I transferred over to that school. And then for second and third grade, I was there. And then I was accepted into Clearspring. And at that time, it was still an application-based process for the elementary Magnet Middle Schools, or sorry, elementary Magnet Schools. And then from there, I went to my home middle school, instead of Magnet Middle School. And then after that, I was accepted into the programs at Poolsville and Richard Montgomery. And I chose to go to Richard Montgomery. And then after realizing it wasn't the right fit for me, which I can explain later for a variety of reasons, then I chose to transfer back to my home high school where I stayed the rest of my career. And I also am now dual enrolled at Montgomery College through the Virtual Middle College Program.
Very good.
He could have done this presentation on our behalf, actually. So we just thought that that story was so important to hear about. I didn't know it was that many at the time that we had spoken about that. But the sense of finding the match. And I just think that that's something we definitely want to take away from this today, is that there are so many different options and our students blossom at different times. They have different needs at different times. Their family circumstances are different at different times. But what we want is that they are, they go through productive struggle throughout their entire experience, which I'm sensing you did.
Yes.
Yes. And so we want to make sure that that occurs, but that you all, you have choice, that you have choice in this. Is there anything that you would advise a family that's going through this process?
Yeah. So I mean, I would say, I think that the programs that I was able to attend were definitely influential in making me who I am. But I would say it's also definitely, like was mentioned before, there is trade-offs, right? So while I was at Richard Montgomery, I chose to wrestle alongside being class president there. So during that time, my bus ride in the morning, I would have to wake up at 5:30 in order to catch a bus at 6:15. And that was, if I, you know, drove a little bit further to make one of the further stops, that was a little bit later in time. And then from there, we would get to school at 7:15 in the morning. And then, you know, class starts at 7:45. So you'd be there in the cafeteria for probably 30 minutes before school started. And then I would, I was wrestling. So what that meant is due to my coach's schedule, I would start practice two hours later after school ended. And my practice ran for around three hours, including setup and breakdown time and then warm-up and cooldowns, which meant, you know, I had, there was no buses. So I had to have my parents drive me back every single day. 7:30, I'd get home at 8:00 and do it for the whole season. So from just around November through February, we were, I was wrestling and it was really time-intensive. And so the decision that I made was, I think the programs, right, a lot of these courses are, you know, the IB courses versus AP courses, to me, I think the trade-off really wasn't, wasn't worth it, right? In order to be able to do the extracurriculars I wanted to do, in order to be able to participate in the activities I want to participate in. And so I made the choice to transfer back to my, my home school of Clarksburg, where I was able to do a lot of these extracurriculars. We were able, you know, before that, we, Clarksburg didn't actually have a Moll UN program. So we were able to start that at Clarksburg and work on getting a lot of these extracurriculars implemented into Clarksburg, which I think was extremely valuable, extremely educational in terms of like a student experience within, within the school system. And I would say, for, for families who are going through this process, I would say, for, if it's, if it's a program where it's, you know, you're, you're just doing it because you want like a little bit more rigor, I would say stay at your home school because they can provide that level of rigor. And it's also about being able to take advantage of the opportunities at the home school. So I was able to continue wrestling at Clarksburg. It's much less of a, you know, a time burden on me and my family, even though practices were still, you know, three hours long. But what allowed me to do is allowed me to participate in extracurriculars and other activities, which I think, you know, ultimately contributed to, you know, my being able to run for SMOL, for example. And I was able to take advantage of the dual enrollment capabilities, which was actually a program I had to apply to in eighth grade as well. So I applied to Richard Montgomery and Poolsville and this Virtual Middle College Program in eighth grade. And then at the end of ninth grade, I was told, you have the option to enroll in this program for your sophomore, junior, and senior year. And so that's when I made the decision to transfer back to Clarksburg and take a couple of my classes at MC. And now I'm a full-time MC student, considered enrolled in Clarksburg for, you know, sporting events, extracurriculars, and other activities.
And I just thank you, Pranil, right, Mr. Savarna, for sharing his personal story. It struck me in several different ways that, first of all, you actually embrace change, right? You went through six different schools and your family and you kept an open mind. Does this work or does this not work? We can try it. If it doesn't work, what's our plan B? You, you so open-minded, right? Second of all, that your family have deep understanding of our offerings. When you talk about Clarksburg, you know the limitation of some of the differences of its extracurriculum offerings. And you were able to bring the change. You were exposed to something at IM and Richard Montgomery. You brought it back. And you also had an understanding, even during your middle school years, of its programming at Clarksburg, that you can do the opportunities at MC, Montgomery College, that, that program. So you had a, your family had a deep understanding. You did a really like deep dive into the offerings. So you are informed in making decisions. So I think there's so much lessons to learn here, right, about knowing the offering, doing your homework. But with the help of the school staff, right, information is goal at information age and keeping an open mind to look for the best fit, right? And you were looking for rigor and you were able to see the comparable between IB and AP courses and which meet your academic need, right? So I think it is highly, it's actually, it's a luxury that we offer in our public education to look for a fit for our student and, and work on college and career readiness, career readiness, right? So, so, but that's very powerful. I think if we would listen to that carefully, we can draw a lot of useful lessons. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah. And, and I was lucky enough to have an older sister who had gone through the process as well. So, you know, I think, I think this will be the case with a lot of these families, where, you know, my, my older sister had gone through the process. She went to Magnet Middle School. And, you know, I was, my, my home middle school was a brand-new middle school. So that played a part in, you know, determining my decision to stay at my home middle school. And then, you know, I think it, it helped me understand the options at Clarksburg better. And I think having gone to Richard Montgomery made me see, you know, what is part of the program, which, you know, students come for and was not part of the program that students come for. And I think a significant portion of that is extracurriculars, right, at Richard Montgomery, at Poolsville. A lot of these, the countywide programs are, are the extracurriculars offered, which is why when I came back to Clarksburg, I did my best to build those up within, within my school.
Thank you for sharing your story with us. I also wanted to just take a minute to introduce our colleague from WorkSource Montgomery, Ms. Jenny Trinchery, who is going to be able to speak to the work that she's doing in coaching and supporting and developing the capacity of our coaches and how she's and her team are working collaboratively with school counselors and other school-based staff to make sure that our students are aware of their choices.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you so much. I am very appreciative to be here today. So yes, I'm Jenny Trinchery and I work for WorkSource Montgomery. Currently, I am a training coordinator for the program. So I help to train the career advising coaches. But last school year, I was a career advising coach myself at Tilden Middle School and Herbert Hoover Middle School. So I'm very fortunate to know what that role is like, along with now getting to learn better the programmatic side of our program, too. So there are a lot of different points that I would love to bring up based on the different conversation I've been hearing right now, such as, such as how Ms. Yang mentioned that, how are we making sure that families know this information and that all school staff knows this information, too? It's not just one or two people. So that's been one of the really great things with being part of this MOCO CAP Career Advising Program, especially as a career coach. Since we have the apprenticeship component of our work, we get to work with MCPS very closely and have monthly trainings to learn more about each of those programs that exist in MCPS. And I do have to admit, I was a former high school teacher myself in MCPS. And to be quite honest, I did not know all these programs existed. So it has been so amazing to have this experience now to know, like, oh, my goodness, there is so many options for students. So it's great that we're training this whole team of people that can now go into the schools. And then the greater part, too, is that we have career advising champion teams. So those are other staff-based members in the schools. It might be different content teachers. It could be school counselors, administrators, where it is a team of people who work with the career advising coach to be able to help deliver the college and career readiness programming. So that means not only does the career advising coach know this content well and students can come talk to them, but then they're spreading it to other team members in the building who then can deliver it through their regular course content, too. It doesn't have to always just be specialized lessons on today, we're focusing on college and career readiness, but always how can we incorporate it into our ongoing conversations? So I just definitely wanted to bring up that point that in addition to also working with the counselors and the CCICs and the high schools, that we are trying to be another resource for students and for staff, for everybody at the schools, absolutely for communities as well. That was another big point I wanted to mention. As you pointed out as well, how are communities getting to know about these different programs? So we, as career advising coaches, are trying to take any, advantage of any opportunity that we can to be present at community events, such as back-to-school night, parent-teacher conferences, any kinds of events that there are, to then be able to explain more about our work as career advising coaches, what the MOCO CAP program does for students, and how parents can contact us more. And then also sending out sometimes letter, newsletters to the community, maybe through like a principal's monthly or weekly letter, something like that, of here's what your student got to learn this month or within the past quarter in regards to this information. So I'm definitely happy to answer any other questions that might come up as to how career advising coaches kind of play into this picture of spreading college and career readiness to students.
No, I think you've done a great job. And I will say that I have seen you all at a lot of different events. Councilmember Lori Ann Sales held community conversations throughout the district. And I saw WorkSource Montgomery there with information at every single one, just very, a variety of events. There seems to be a table and you all are putting in the information out in addition to, you were a partner at our back-to-school fair.
Yes. Yes, I'm glad to hear that. You're definitely seeing we're present. We're out there. We're trying our best.
Yes, no, I am. Thank you.
I actually get to observe a lesson when they were giving our instruction. And at that particular school, they were partnering up with the physical education teacher so that every student will get a chance, on that grade level, will get a chance to be exposed to the concepts. So I, it's, it's our first year. So I'm very, is it our first year?
Actually, our second.
This school year is the second year, last school year. I'm actually very interested in hearing some feedback of how is it going, right? Are there any challenges we see on the ground? And I think with any new programs, the first three years, there, there are adjustments so that it can live up to its potential, right? Lots of things look very good on paper. And in practice, we find there are ways to treat it, to make it even better. And so I'm very interested. With that, do you think there's something coming up in terms of survey, evaluation, feedback? Is that going to happen?
Yes. Just to clarify first, who are you specifically asking about getting feedback from, like, from our program or like families or?
So all of the above. Are we planning anything to understand how well this program is going from the perspective of our schools, our school staffs looking at this, from WorkSource Montgomery and MOCO CAP, right? And from our students who are the receiver of the programs? I'm wondering, are there anything in the works?
Yes, absolutely. That's a great question. So especially over the summer. So we are 12-month employees. So then we get to spend our summer then really working on professional development and making sure that we're planning for the upcoming school year. And a big part of that as well included making sure that we were, in fact, taking all the feedback that we got from our internal WorkSource Montgomery, MOCO CAP team members, as well as from the staff, such as previous champion team members or any other school staff. And then from the MCPS side as well, like the MCPS Central Office and everyone there. So we, one of the biggest things we try to focus on for this year, because as you mentioned, yes, there of course are some challenges. And one of those being, to your point earlier of how do we make sure that this is kind of both centralized but also tailored to each school? So that was one of our big focuses for this year with trying to restructure our program delivery to make sure that, one way we access students, as you mentioned, that you got to observe, is the whole group sessions. So we're trying to make sure that our whole group sessions are generally centralized throughout the county so that if a student, just as our student member of the board, if a student goes to any other school within Montgomery County, they're still receiving the same general information and the programming and understand RISEC and the different career themes we talk about. But then, we also have small group and one-on-one follow-up sessions with students. And those can be self-selected by the student. It could be teacher or counselor referrals. Or it could be the career coach, for some reason, sought them out for further coaching. So that then is a way that coaches can figure out how to best meet the needs at their own school. So obviously, they had first that centralized delivering, but then now, what does my school specifically need? What are the different programs at my specific school that I can make sure I can talk to students about? What are the dynamics in my school? Anything along those lines? So that is definitely one of the biggest pieces of feedback. I feel like we've been able to try to incorporate more this year to improve our program. Because as you mentioned, we are for sure trying to continue to improve this program each year.
Let me ask you this question. Is that, so from, so in, in listening to what you just said, could it be that from the students going through the process and figuring out what their RISEC score is, that whatever their interests are, they don't see it at their school? Is that what you mean?
Sorry, they don't what at their school?
They don't see any offerings based on their interests that they've come up with? Is that what you're talking about? Or am I taking away something totally different?
A little bit. So students do, at the end of each whole group, small group, and one-on-one session, have an opportunity to complete a feedback survey. And then that feedback survey can give us a variety of information, such as their personal RISEC themes, which then the coach can then which then the coach can then evaluate all the data for their school and see. For instance, last year, I hosted a Meetapro event at my schools at Herbert Hoover Middle School. I saw that students were most potentially interested in being doctors or lawyers. So I was able to then bring in a doctor to talk to a subset of students to come in. So it is definitely, we can get that feedback from students of like, this is what I'm most interested in. Or, for instance, I also had a student who was interested in an aviation program, which does not exist in his cluster of schools, but there's the McGruder program. So I'm able to then let him know, okay, maybe you could go to this place instead. So yes, okay.
Yes, okay. Yep, you hit it. Okay, very good.
Dr. Floyd came up very quickly and reminded me, it's important to understand this was a soft launch last year. So they just started in the fall. There was interviewing, there was training, there was agreement, there was program visioning, there was a lot of work done between all of the Montgomery County organizations that are participating in this as part of the blueprint for Maryland's future. So while the state has not developed their tool for evaluating the impact of it yet, you can count on the fact that because there's a significant monetary investment in this, that we will be required to report back very specifically what outcomes there are. And then just to add on to what you're speaking of, so that everybody understands that this is very different. This is not college coaching. It's not helping you write your letters. It's not, it's not even knowing all of the businesses in the community where you might work. It is focused on the student, the student themselves, to empower the student. And so if the student knows what their strengths, interests, and values are, then presented and as they see options, they can make informed choices about things that would match their strengths, which, as a parent of two young, well, two young adults at this point, I feel like that was a piece that was missing. Like, in my thinking of what would be next for my own children, I had very clear pathways. You know, this one's going to college, this one's interested in X, Y, Z. And I think that by knowing what my students wanted, we didn't take that careful look until the second one. And knowing what it is that she was interested in and what she valued, then we could help do some searching. Then we could help engage people that we knew. So I think the unique nature of this program using an industry tool, but to give students the framework to think about who they are as individuals, really is a powerful piece that I've not yet seen.
Yeah. No, so thank you for that reminder. And myself and Ms. Wolf, we were able to actually see teachers in the classroom at work and students knowing at an elementary level what their RISEC scores were and how that transferred into a lesson and/or presentations. I think it would be really great if at some point, because I do know this, we're in the very early stages, but when we do come back to report out, if we could have videos or something, like a testimonial or asking a student what their RISEC score is and what that means to them. Because I know when we were in California, I cannot remember the school district, we observed a middle, I believe they were middle schoolers, and they were giving presentations. And they knew their RISEC score, they knew what their career choice was. And the way they were presenting, I was just in awe. But I'll tell you what. So that school had it everywhere. So even if parents weren't aware that we were doing career advising, which I think is phenomenal and is a really big deal, they could see as they were coming into that school, that individual school, what their kids were possibly working on and what they were thinking about. And it helped maybe me, it would help me as a parent to tap into how I could begin approaching or supporting my student either in the summertime or just books I can point them to, to read and understand. So I'm so glad that we have the leaders that we have here in Montgomery County to do this work. And the blueprint is allowing us to think about how we do it a little bit differently. And I just really want to commend MCPS for just being two steps ahead all the time. So thank you, Ms. Trinchary. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, for your presentation, for the work that you're doing to train our coaches so they can get up to speed, be able to better support our students as they're thinking about what their future is going to look like and what they're passionate about. And then, Mr. Subarna, I just wanted to, so I've heard your story before, and I was really captivated. Because I think I want to say this, your parents didn't make the decision for you to do that switch. You made the decision on your own. And I just thought at a very young age that when you described, and I don't know that you really went into depth about how you really had to come to terms as to what you should or could do for your future to just make it a little bit better and not... There seemed to have been a lot of stress and strain on you being at Richard Montgomery, doing the thing that you, you thought you would want to do, but as you were there and you kind of saw what you went through, that you made that change that was necessary and also allowed you to kind of be at the point where you're at right now. So kudos to you, right? Takes a lot of courage to, at some point, what do we, what do we say to our students? We want them to... Well, yeah, they have to struggle, like, to fail fast, right? And so you weren't failing. I'm not saying you were failing, but you were just aware that, okay, so it's okay if I want to switch and change courses because this is going to be better for the mental piece and just for you to be able to access your academics. I thought that was a big deal.
Yeah, and I would like to say, like, if I had to do it over, like, I probably would do it the same exact way I did it, because I think it provided me the perspective to...
Sure. Yeah, you know, you have to learn. I mean, experience is, experience can be hard, but it is the best teacher, right? And you don't know until you actually go through it. But I do think there should be a way that we could have you tell the story so that students are okay with, if they decide they were going to go in one direction and then they decided to change courses. Nothing is wrong with being able to pivot, right? But thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come and share your story with us.
I would just say better to take that time now to pivot early before it's costly in college.
Right, absolutely. So Ms. Trinchary, I think, you know, education is the process of learning about yourself and the world. So that is a big piece about, you know, learning about yourself. And I think that my colleague alluded to inclusion of family in this process. How, while we work with the students on their career aptitudes and interests and understanding their self, how, let's think about how we incorporate parents in this conversation. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you guys so much. I really appreciate having the chance to be here and doing this work in Montgomery County. As you said, it's been an amazing opportunity that does not necessarily exist in every county, and it's been really great to be able to support students in a more individualized way, to give them tools that they have for life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much for being here. You are absolutely welcome to stay. Looks like you are not going to stay, okay? But your stories have been great. We really appreciate the partnership. And if we can, as we're getting ready to go to slide 13, we wanted to thank you again for being here, both of you. Thank you so much. So we've had a lot of great discussion, and this is a little bit of what we have been talking about, are some of the barriers that we are experiencing. You've heard them, we've heard them. We have processes in place to help support families. But I really appreciated the opportunity to hear about the quality of life that eventually needs to come through during a student's educational plan.
Absolutely.
So the quality of living is really important, and we said this very early, Dr. Lagrange said this very early, our students have multiple interests. And so the goal is trying to maximize all of these different opportunities so that you become who you want to become. And I think it's also okay that we find that we didn't like what we were doing. That is just as important as finding what you do like that you're doing. So here are some of the barriers that we have alluded to throughout the conversation. Some of these that I would highlight, did not know about the programs. We do have families that might not be as invested in learning or have the time to learn, or, like my parents, they totally trusted the school system for those adults to make decisions on my behalf. And so I think that we need to approach that from all of these different venues, that we want to also make sure that our students have agency and that they can learn and look at these opportunities, and that we want you to take a risk, take a try, make a change, because you can always make, return to what you have always been experiencing. Some of the feedback we get, limited seats in a program. Sometimes we hear a little bit that it's challenging to apply. We have moved to the digital age, but we have tried to come up with other alternative ways for families to learn. And then we've made process changes, such as a sibling link in our one-way language immersion programs. That was a shift to create more equity. So these are some of the barriers that come up. However, we are really committed to making sure families understand the reasoning, the rationale, and then also redirecting them to building a relationship with their local schools. Next slide, please. So here are some of the strategies that we put into place. We have missed the deadline, so we, most of our programs, we offer a rolling admission. It's not the same, but we have exhausted some of our waitlists for some of our programs. So some of our students who do come later are able to get into programs that they want. Our lottery-based programs are able to use different factors when we're running the lottery to expand equity. We have expanded the criteria in interest-based high school programs. So we started five decades ago in the 1970s, I think that's right. And then in 2000, in the 2000s, we had another explosion of programs, the interest-based high school programming with aviation at McGruder, with MC Squared over at Northwest and Northwood. We opened up two hubs. We already had Thomas Edison of High School of Technology with our career readiness. We opened up Seneca Valley. We opened up Gaithersburg, which already had programs, but we created Central. So the goal was to continue expanding so that students in our high schools had multiple experiences. And if you're a student in grades nine through 12, nine through 11, you have the opportunity to start a part-time program as well. So we are really trying to recognize that students blossom, find their interests, become electrified by a new program at different times in their lives. So this is what we're trying to respond to. But again, our local programs do serve the greatest number of our students because our local schools personalize the experience for students, because that's their community. Can we go to the next slide, please? So we heard from Mr. Shen. We can keep going. And so here are some of the outcomes, and we're just going to take a few minutes to look at some of the outcomes. In all of our efforts to reach out to families, so Ms. Yang, you asked about the yellow paper. What I didn't get to describe to you is that for every eighth grader, we also create a report for them in their parent view and student view. It's called the eligibility report. So during this time, they're going to get a list. This is your local high school, examine your local high school. But here are that 20 different regional programs you can also apply to. Here are websites you can go to. Come meet us, come visit us. So we do also provide that. But you're right, it does require some energy on the part of families to kind of engage with that. But we want families to know that we are trying to respond to their interests. But here are some of the outcomes. We've observed stabilized and sustained retention for students due to limited central stop transportation. Our team in MCPS Transportation have been the champions of our programs. We have seen access from all zip codes to all of our enrichment programs. So that's really important, because in the previous cycles of our review committees, there were certain areas that would dominate these seats. Now with the central review, we have students coming from all over. So that does so much for our elementary and middle schools because they know that they have talented students and were able to identify them and help support them. If you are identified for enrichment, you are guaranteed programming. So that is another step forward. And we are doing this with partnership with establishing strong local schools. So all of this is packaged so that our families, whether they miss a deadline or not, are still going to have strong programming at their local schools. And then in the future, you'll have an opportunity. One other piece that I know that sometimes the board hears is the elementary immersion programs. We have one-way immersion programs, we have two-way immersion programs. Not every elementary school has language. However, we have an on-ramp in sixth grade. Every student then in sixth grade can start with languages and still earn the seal of biliteracy. So this is the kind of information we share with our parents so that they know how valuable the opportunities that they have, and they don't have to do everything right now. Enjoy, learn, build in your community, and then you have all of these different opportunities later. The other piece I just wanted you to know with our central review is that every single racial, ethnic group and service group had an increase of students being identified. So this really was a game changer for families. Families would say to us, how did you know that my child was talented? How did you know that my kid really needed a program? I did not know. And so that's where they're trusting us. So that's why this part of that process is very important. Next slide, please. So here's just a little snippet. We have a few of these. We don't have to go through all of them, but I just wanted you to see, this is a clip from the memorandum that you get every year. And this is to show you, of the 11,523 students, I'm looking at the very last column and the top row, number of students considered, that's how many students were considered for literacy enrichment. We use a multiple measure central review process of all students, and the number below it, 2,011 students were identified for enriched literacy. So that's just from a central level. What happens after that is that the students, that data goes to the local elementary schools, and they receive additional guidance to look at additional data to determine if students need enrichment at their local elementary school. So this is just one step. The goal is making sure we match students up so they can have that productive struggle in elementary school at a very young age. So what I pointed out in the orange circle there is, we're always looking at those two numbers, the percent considered and the percent identified. In the spirit of equity, we would like to see those numbers a little closer together. But in this example, we see that Asian students made up 13.7% of the group considered, but 19.7% were identified. That's not a negative thing. All it is, from a statistical perspective, is that they are disproportionately identified for this. But if you look at the next column for black or African-American, 21.2% of the students were considered are black or African-American, and 18.4% of the students were identified for enrichment. So those numbers aren't as close together. So that's a question we would ask, why is that? Let's look at the elementary schools. Let's look at the data. Let's look to see where we can drive some support. And then if you look at the white students, we have 24% of them make up the pool, and then 35%, 35.2% were identified. So that is another, from a statistical perspective, disproportionately identified. So these are questions that we have, but this data definitely is better because we did not have these kinds of numbers in the past. So this means that this number of students, at a minimum, 2,011 students are getting enriched literacy. In addition, there are more at the local schools. So this is a move in the right direction. Let's go to...
Can I ask a clarification question? Because we just did Evidence of Learning the last Thursday on reading and literacy. I actually feel these two numbers don't correspond, right? That if you look at that data, for some of our grades, elementary school grades or middle school grades, Asian and white students are meeting benchmark at 80%, while our African-Americans and Hispanic groups are only meeting the benchmark at 40% or even lower, 30%. So I don't see this as out of proportionate as the other one. The other one's even more so out of proportionate. Why is the discrepancy? Can you explain that to me?
You answered, yeah. But this is just grade three?
Right. Well, but in grade three, and we do a central review, and they're identified through multiple data points, that, these numbers that you're looking at are of those considered. So they're different numbers of students. I'm trying to understand your correlation between what you saw in literacy and the disparities that exist there. We still see disparities that exist in those numbers of students who are percentages of student groups who are accepted into enriched literacy. So I need...
Chaim, help me understand your criteria for identification here. Is it every school, every student using the same criteria for identification?
Yeah, so we use multiple measures. So we'll use the reading... So we'll use the reading level of a student. We'll use their report card grades for writing, social studies, and reading. And then we'll also use their MAP R score, and it's locally normed. So we use those data pieces. And then that combination, that threshold, provides us an opportunity to identify students who need enrichment. So it's part of it is readiness, part of it's potential.
So what it is, this explained the discrepancy to me. For our evidence of learning data, the benchmark is one across the board. What you are referring here for identification is locally normed. So we cannot mix and match those things. And when we mention disproportionate, we have to be like saying what the gap is, but each one is defined differently, how you were doing it. So I just want everyone to understand that. Yeah, thank you.
Very good point. So let's look at the next, if we can go to the next slide.
If I can ask, why do we use benchmark to all across the system, use one benchmark to say whether you meet or not met? Why here we use different measure, like use same criteria, but say locally norm? Can you explain that to me?
So we started using locally normed about four years ago when we got feedback from the Metis Report. So we, when we installed the Metis Report recommendations, we used the national norm with MAP R, MAP M. We were using that. What we found is that there were large numbers of students who were performing in the 90th percentile. And we were having the same outcomes where there were outliers in our elementary schools, but they didn't always perform as highly as students who might have come from less impacted school areas. So what would happen is that students were still being squeezed out. So when we went to the gifted and talented researchers, and there's a national conference that happens every year, and there are a number of different researchers that help support us, the recommendation was to start looking at locally norm because this is comparing students who are in similarly situated instructional situations. And within those groups, you would always have outliers that come up who needed more opportunities to learn and more opportunities to be challenged. So when we have outliers remain in the same school and they don't have a peer group, it's challenging for them to thrive, and sometimes they regress because they aren't having the productive struggle. So that's why that's so important. It is less of a challenge to have students who are in a school where they have large numbers of students with academic peers. It's less important actually for them to leave or go to another school because they have academic peers. So we need to move from this notion that it's the curriculum. The curriculum fixes everything. It's not. It's a combination. It's the curriculum, it's the peer group, it's the extracurriculars, it's the capstones or extra extra opportunities, yeah, extra opportunities that further your understanding about the programs. So it's a whole, it's teacher training, so it's all of these pieces. So the reason why we started using locally norm and haven't expanded it at this time everywhere else yet, it's a conversation we're looking to have.
Okay, so you explained that. So maybe it's beyond today's scope, but in the future, I would like to hear now you have locally normed outliers from each different region or different schools, right? So then they are all together, these are being lottery-selected students, now are all together in an enrichment center, which might look very different from maybe four years ago when you're using a uniform standard.
Yes.
So in the future day, maybe you can explain to me how all the vital, how we are working with the enrichment centers? Because now the class differences is wider. How are we working with the enrichment centers so that not only the students, the students there will have productive struggle? Quoting your word, I love that phrase.
Yes.
Regardless where they come from, from the level they enter into the program, right? So that's another day's conversation. Thank you.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So if we can go to the next slide. So the grade three and grade five central review are similar, but I wanted to give you just a little peek at one of the other interest-based programs because we also want to convey that for a long time, we've had criteria-based, merit-based programs, which can be, for some families culturally, can be quite intimidating. And so this idea of having interest base is really that. If you're interested, you can try. And because we have more requests than seats available, we run a lottery. So it's less intimidating as we're trying to have an inclusive educational program here in the system with our admission program, so we have a variety. So this is Gaithersburg High School. This is a biomedical sciences program. So where again, I'll draw your attention to the percent of applied because this is not a central review, this is application, and the percent of students invited. And so you'll see in this example, which might be different than grade three, we'll have 45.9% of the applicants were Asian, but 22.7% were invited. Then you look at black or African-American, 21.2% made up the applicant pool, and then 27.8% made up the invited. Now, this is lottery, and we do have the yield to apply different factors to yield certain outcomes, such as we don't want to take all of the students from X high school. We don't want to take only females from X high school. So we can run the lottery a variety of different ways, and then a committee will agree to recommend one going forward. So the idea is access and opportunity in this example. But this is the kind of data. Now, this kind of data also helps us determine, hmm, we need to look at our applicant pool, and maybe there are families who don't know about these programs. So we can dissect it a little bit more, such as X middle school, they have no applicants. We need to reach out to them. So this is the kind of information this can help us with. But then we can also say, wow, 13 students from X middle school came. We need to talk to that high school because maybe they need a local program.
Did I misunderstand something? Or can you clarify? You say this is a lottery program.
This is a lottery.
But you control, what are we controlling?
You can use weighted factors to help outcomes.
So what are the weighted factors?
Sure, so a weighted factor can be use of free and reduced meal services criteria. It can be geography, if you are a student that's your host school, we can use that as a factor, depending on creating equity. So we've used these in our language immersion program lotteries. We use these in the Northeast Down County and Middle School Magnet Consortium. So we've learned from those.
So help me visualize it, right, the process. So you have a pool, students' names in it. Okay, do you first screen them based on these weighted factors? Or do you do the lottery first, then after the lottery, you, then you look at? So you have, so how does it work? So when do you put in the weighted factors?
So let me give you an example. So the language immersion is a perfect example. So in the language immersion, we can use, if you're a student at the host school, if you're, so you have a sibling factor, you have a sibling in another program, if you live in a certain region, right? So the idea is if you're in a Title I school as well. So what happens is that Jeannie Franklin is in the lottery, so I am in there one time. But I have an older sibling, so my name goes in again. And then if I am at a Title I school, my name goes again. So my name is in the lottery three times. Then the lottery is run. So the likelihood of me being invited is higher.
Your chances because, okay.
Yes, so that's an example of how our lotteries can work, and that is based on feedback that we've received from the board. And these are also resolutions that former boards have executed in our consortia. Does that help?
Thank you for explaining that. So for all together, it's 366 students apply, and we can invite 97 students.
So, and that is for probably a seat of 30? But because we have students who are invited to multiple programs, they can only accept one, we over-invite.
So that our yield rate usually is about 30%?
Correct, correct. Okay, and so if we can go to the next slide. And this is just a peek at the aviation program. The aviation program is countywide, but we only provide limited central bus stop transportation to a few of our ascending high school clusters. And this is a program we're examining to determine if we need to duplicate in another part of the region. All of these programs are that. So part of the question you had earlier was evaluating our programs. Our programs do go through a data review. We also are not saying sunset the program because of numbers. We also have to look at the story. There are opportunities to sometimes combine it with another existing program. But we do want the families and our community to know that we want to be responsible using our dollars fiscally. And so if there are creative ways to do that, we'll absolutely do that. So this is another example. And I would like to bring you to the, to slide 23. This is also something regarding the board. In 2016, 17, where the little orange, orange was the theme color, I guess this time, we're showing 27% of the students who were Title I as applicants, they were accessing the immersion. So that was a concern in the past, that some of our families who were impacted by free and reduced meals were not accessing the immersion lottery because of the lottery criteria. Because the board took the step and added additional lottery criteria that we could look at, in 2022, 23, 80% of the families who were impact, who are in Title I schools were able to access. So what that's done is it's just opened up. Because if you looked at the data in the past, immersion families, you know, they were non-farms families, non-Title I families. And so we, the board did not agree that that was the only family that we wanted, type of family we wanted to serve. And so we have some admission ways of addressing that through our lotteries, okay? So next slide, I know Ms. Yang, I can tell that you're looking at it. I think you're looking at it, but we're moving on to the next slide, okay? This is available for you, but here's some areas of growth and next steps. And we wanted just to wrap up with our last presentation from a video from a family member. But our areas of growth, we continue to still see a related, correlated impact for access programs for Hispanic, Latino, and African-American and black students. We definitely need to continue strengthening our talent development. We need to strengthen parent engagement opportunities that has come up here. We need to move families from being aware to them being informed because you act differently when you're informed. And then we also need to examine our program options to better serve our students and maximize our resources. And so we have a few strategies here. I think our biggest one right now, program evaluations, and then develop an earlier outreach system. Because what I heard as a theme is a relationship. Who are you talking to? Who do you need? Who do you trust that can give you some guidance on these pieces? So if we could go to slide 26. We'd like for you to hear from a parent. She was unable to be here today, but this is Amber Jang Ha, and she is a parent of two students at James H. Blake High School, who would like to give you her perspective.
Hi, my name is Amber Jang Ha, and I just wanted to share why my children have enjoyed the public schools, the local schools in our community. And really, it comes down to that one word, community. My two students' children went to Stonegate Elementary, and we did try for the Magnet Program, and we were disappointed when they were not accepted. But Stonegate really did everything to meet the rigor demands that my kids needed. And certainly that was true at White Oak, and certainly that has been true at Blake. And I think one of the reasons that we've been so happy with our local schools is really because of the community. The principal, Mrs. Jones, we know her at Stonegate. Mrs. De La Santos at White Oak, Mrs. Sneed at Blake. All of our administrators, teachers, counselors, coaches, they're all just completely accessible. You run into them at the grocery store, you run into them at Target in the neighborhood. So it has just been really wonderful to experience this community around the school environment and go to basketball games and football games and do all of the fun things that really support our students and our children. And as I said, in terms of the rigor, each school has always stepped up to really challenge our kids academically and prepare them for success in college readiness. And if that's what your child needs, our schools have really done that. So I'm very grateful that we've been a part of the Montgomery County school system and that we've chosen the local school, and our kids can walk to and from school. And that's been great, not to have to spend a lot of time in the car either, going across county. So I hope this helps, and thank you.
Very good. I like that she was able to send in the video even though she wasn't able to be here. And what immediately came to my mind is the work that we're trying to do at our schools, at building community, is to like get outside of the school walls and to meet our families where they're at. And this past weekend, I was able to go to the Watkins Mill Cluster Block Party, and it was like a ton of people there. And I was driving up, it was, there was an arrow pointing towards event parking. And I thought, ooh, where's that going? Well, I'm gonna try to go up to the front. But there were so many people, and I was stopping some of the students and just talking to them. And some of them were middle schoolers at the high school, and they were very surprised, but very happy at the size of the crowd. But there's a lot of information and resources out there. So I think the more that we can build community, that everything else will, my hope is that everything else will kind of fall in hand in terms of what resources are available at their local schools or just any information that they might need to access to help them to decide whether or not some of the application programs that we have to offer are good for their students. So we are definitely trying to engage and pull parents in in a different way, particularly after the pandemic, where we were not able to be connected as much as we would have liked, right? But so we're finding ways to be more, even more intentional and to let our families know the work that's happening at our schools and taking their feedback and information so that we can make adjustments, right, to the work. So I do, I don't know if this is the last slide or not, but
Yes, the next slide is just a list of resources for you. Should you have any questions? We referenced quite a few of these things during the presentation.
We will get this slide.
Yep, you have all of this, yep.
Okay, that's great.
Yes, yes. And so the last slide is just discussion, so turn it back to you.
So for me, we are not offering academic program just for offering academics programs sake, right? It's not how many program we have that define who we are. It's whether these academic program improve our students' academic achievement and better prepare them for the career and post-secondary opportunities. That's what matters. And in today's discussion, we talk about the ways, and in every single one of them, how we bring the families into this discussion. How are we reaching out to the family? I think that's our focus today. But it has identified a lot of things that we can potentially have future conversations. And I really thank you for putting this together.
Absolutely. So thank you so much for coming to share with us and talk with us about some of the barriers and the strategies and the outcomes that we're taking to try to meet the needs of our students and our families. It's been a great discussion. And as Ms. Yang said, we can always find different conversations to bring you back to the table, but probably for a more engaging discussion with the entire board. But appreciate the information that you all shared. It was very helpful and informative and can help us as we do this work on the board to ensure that our students are college, career, and community ready. So with that, we will adjourn and enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you for your time.